Yeah.
Turn to go into the children's hospital, there's like a dip there and it seems like it's getting worse. But I think she says there might be a fault running there, but if you go over the dip, it's getting worse. And it just hits.
That help you?
No, I just thought it'd do that as a reminder.
Oh, no, I remember now.
Thank you.
So that's a hospital for lives.
Because it helps Wies.
Well. I'll let you go.
All right. Are we in the right spots? But, okay. All right. Are we ready? All right.
I didn't tell you.
This is our city council regular meeting. We're in the Mon County Commission Chambers. It's Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, and it's a little bit past 7:00 PM. We're calling the meeting to order and we're asking our deputy clerk to, please call the rule.
Deputy Mayor of Buganum.
President.
Bill Kawaki.
Here.
Wheeze Michael.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
And Mayor Sleen.
Here. Now we're going to stand for the pledge. The pledge is.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we have two sets of minutes today. One set of minutes today. We have the December 19th special meeting minutes from 2023. And I would like to see if we can approve them by acclamation.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Certainly.
And the next set we will have at our next meeting. And now we are under correspondence and we are swearing in some police officers, not today. We're doing that at the next meeting or?
Sixteenth.
Perfect. Now we're going to discuss an ordinance establishing a private outdoor designated area. And this is on this part of the agenda because we.
Areas where patrons of restaurants or bars with alcohol service licenses can purchase a drink in the restaurant or bar and take it outside and travel through the area. These are, they're successful models for these in surrounding states, notably Ohio and North Carolina, but, but many others as well. They are often ways to promote your downtown business districts, restaurant districts, arts districts. And give another way to encourage people to come and dine and shop in an area and spend a bit more time there. So West Virginia's passed its own version and the, the city of Morgantown has been working with Stakeholder Group among city staff, Main Street Morgantown and restaurant and bar operators to try to find a way that that will work for this community. What is before you is a draft ordinance establishing a, a single private outdoor designated area for the city. This essentially covers the downtown area and the Wharf District and should encompass all bars and restaurants operating in those areas. There is a, a map attached which will be updated for council's first reading and, and final action on this. But the, the general area covered is downtown between Willie Street and Sturgis Street and between Chestnut Street and Spruce Street, including all the, the businesses on either side. And then in the, the Wharf District from Walnut Street all the way down to the Waterfront Place Marriott Hotel. The, the ordinance meets the requirements for state code for these districts. There is a process for participants to apply and obtain a license from A B C A to, to participate in the program. And then authorizes regulations by the city manager to establish kind of how the, the district will be managed, such as by providing certain cups or wristbands to designate who proper patrons are in the district who can carry a, a cup around in the area. It does, the ordinance specifically establishes the operating arrow hours for the district, which are 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM during the week and 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM on the weekends. So this is, is being first presented to city council tonight. It is intended as a placeholder or a substitute for your ordinary committee of the whole presentation consideration. So that if council members have questions about the terms or proposed changes to the ordinance, we could work on those and present them to you on first reading at a later time. There is, there are two placeholders left in the ordinance, one being the effective date as well. And it will, you know, once council decides it will take the city and stakeholders some time to put the district in place and get it up and running. So I'd be happy to address any questions council has, comment on any, any other areas of the ordinance. But that's the, the brief synopsis.
Do people have questions about this? Yes.
What other communities have implemented so far?
In West Virginia, Huntington and Charleston have both created private outdoor designated areas. Huntington has, I believe, just created one and has many participants. Charleston has by ordinance created five districts. The last I checked in with them, they did have a couple, at least applicants, maybe licensed participants in one of their districts and maybe more.
And since it's, and this is due to state legislation, an establishment, an establishment must have a Class A license. So if somebody doesn't have a liquor license, they just sell beer or wine, they cannot participate, is that right?
That's right, currently. The, the state law that allows licensees to participate limits participants to on premises, to licenses for on premises consumption, including sales of liquor. So a, an establishment that just has a tavern license or a different type of license that doesn't allow sales of liquor is not currently allowed to participate in, in the district by state law.
And that's not something we can impact at this point?
Not directly by city council ordinance. You all talked with your local legislators at your planning session early about, about whether some changes to open that up to other license holders might be merited. And I, I think that got a positive response. We've had some discussions also with Main Street and business operators here, as well as some other cities about whether they would support legislation like that.
Cool. Thank you.
If, if an area, another part of the city wanted to create an outdoor designated area, what would they do? Like, this can be amended, obviously?
Yes, so this ordinance is set up to create general rules and then specify a particular district, which is right now a combined downtown and Wharf District. A new district could be created by city council with, within the same article of the code. And it would just have a new boundary and could have different operating times and, and other features if you would like. Any kind of, any interested businesses or citizens could, you know, contact the city manager's office or a member of council to, to ask about that option. And we'd be happy to work with you and them on doing that.
I could see, I'm not sure exactly where, but I could see another part of one of the corridors or a place where there were.
I am curious, is this limited to municipalities?
Yes, the authority to create these districts is limited to municipalities by state law.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, let's see. I've written stuff all over it. Identify all of it. I think everything else. I think everything else is clear. I, I was kind of looking at kind of how the whole system worked and it seems as though it will work well. I think I just wanted to make sure that, that if another area was interested that they could. And, and I had the same concerns about someone that had a, a beer or a wine, but not a, not a full liquor license. Which just seems silly not to include them, so I'm hoping that that will, that change will be made. Anything else from anybody else?
There's like, I guess there's been a lot of interchangeability of terms between P O D A and D O R A. Is P O D A the like, what the legislation says?
That's our, that's our state law. So D O R A is, is Ohio's law, is a designated outdoor recreation area. North Carolina calls them social districts. West Virginia's law calls it a private outdoor designated area. You could certainly, I assume, name yours, something else if you would like. But P O D A's the placeholder here.
Okay. I was just making sure. And then if somebody applies to do this, are they permitted to sell within the entire footprint of the area that we've designated? Or do they get, is it, do they have to have different permits for different sizes or?
The way this works now, as I understand it, is that they can, they can still only sell from their licensed premises, but then someone who buys a drink there can take the drink anywhere within.
Within that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is a separate, so, so restaurants and bars within the district will, will apply to the city to get permission because that's what the state law says they have to do. But then they have to get another license from the Alcohol Beverage Control Administration. It's called an S four permit or license. And so they will have a separate license for participating in the P O D A. But those are, under this law, limited to just allowing them to participate within their current license area.
So say, so I guess like the most practical thing that might happen with this is that several bars all are doing this at the same time. Is any kind of way of us knowing or enforcing the idea that like, this bar does not have a liquor license because there's, we have those downtown, like say, Arper. So they wouldn't be able to do this, but other bars are. You know what I mean? Like, it seems like it could get. Like, it seems like it could get very hard to know, like, hey, did you get that drink from?
Oh, sure. Well, so, there is a, so there's a state law requirement for the kind of cups that can be used. They have to be non-glass and limited to eighteen ounces, I believe. It's recited in the ordinance. What a lot of places do, I'm not sure if Charleston and Huntington are doing this, but they have a, a designated cup for the P O D A. So that anybody who, anybody who would bring it onto the street is presumably getting that from a, a participating establishment.
Should that be written in this ordinance or should, is that like a matter of administrative process?
There's something in here.
It's written in now as a, a condition of applying to participate that the restaurant or bar will agree to use the designated cup or wristband if the city provides one. And then that's, you know, left to administering the district whether the city will do that or will choose to use another method. There have been a lot of discussions about that with the working group with Main Street, city staff and others. And there are certainly, you know, some, some various but successful models out there. I don't think any one in particular was preferred among everyone yet. So, that's, you know, kind of left for implementation here.
Controversial, I'm sure.
I don't know. Maybe-
Cup design.
Maybe so. I mean, so Huntington and Charleston are doing these successfully in West Virginia. Many, many places in Ohio are doing them well. We looked a lot at, at Marietta, because it's a, a smaller college town. And they, they have a designated cup that their Main Street organization kind of buys and resells to participating bars and funds downtown improvements. But there are a, a lot of different good ways to do it from what it looks like.
And then for, under sanitation, it looked like we still had a placeholder for the, um, regular waste collection includes X amount of public trash receptacles. Are we still working that out or?
We need to count the number of trash cans within the designated district. We just haven't, because the, the boundaries are not entirely finalized yet. We, we just, you know, haven't done that count, but we'll supply that number. And that's not, specifying the actual number of containers available is not a specific requirement of the state law, but it's, you know, it's something that's helpful to notify people.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
So, if, pardon, then if someone purchases a drink and they are going out into this area, are they just confined to their, their area? Or they can be anywhere in the, anywhere in the P O D A area?
This is for anywhere in the district. So, you could, I think the theory is you can go to a restaurant and get a drink and walk down the street to your favorite shop and, you know, browse and buy something and then head on your way.
Yep. Savannah, Georgia does a lot of that.
Yes.
It's very nice. Seems kind of regular or normal. Yep. We'll keep, keep looking at it, but it, it makes good sense. Anything else?
Good.
If you would like, and you don't have any other comments or questions, if you would move this to your next regular meeting agenda for first reading? Yeah, absolutely.
In terms of liability, so, um, because the cups, they go from place to place, right? And they can have these cup, so will bars be able to refill, offer refills for their beers on these cups? My, I guess what I'm getting at, I'm sorry, let me clarify. If somebody uses a fake I D. to purchase an alcoholic beverage, and they take their cup and they walk down the street and they're standing outside of another establishment, who will be held accountable?
So, one of the unique features of the West Virginia law creating these districts is that it provides that participating establishments will be jointly and severally liable for all Alcohol Beverage Control Administration license violations. So, this is dependent on the enforcement discretion of A B C A, but it's, there's a potential that every participating establishment in the district could be held liable for a violation of alcohol laws by A B C A. And that's, you know, obviously caused some concern among restaurants and bars in Morgantown.
I would hate for our restaurants to lose their license for trying to participate.
Yes. And, you know, we've, we've had those ongoing discussions. We've had a discussion with A B C A, and that's another one of those issues that you all talked with legislators about, seeing whether there's another workable solution to make sure that A B C A has the ability to enforce licensure laws, but also that, that, you know, one establishment isn't unfairly punished for the conduct of someone else.
Thank you.
So, would you all like to pass this on to our next agenda?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
To, no, nevermind.
We're not, we're not allowed to vote on it, because we're doing a pseudo-committee at the whole. Next, we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance authorizing a standard airline agreement and lease with Southern Airways Express LLC. And so, this is a hearing just regarding this airline agreement. So, if anyone is here to speak on that, this is your moment. And then later on in the meeting, we'll have our public portion that, where any topic can be discussed. So, we are opening this public hearing about the airline agreement. So, this is a matter that we discussed at our meeting in December. And then if there's no one wishing to speak on this matter, we're going to close this public hearing, and then we're going to go on to unfinished business, and we're going to consider the item. Consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a standard airline agreement and lease with Southern Airways Express LLC. The first reading was twelve nineteen twenty-three. And if our city attorney wanted to just describe a little bit about what this is?
Thank you, Karen. Everybody, Director Frabel attended your last meeting and described the specific terms of this agreement. Just as a, a brief refresher, this agreement provides for Southern Airways to continue pri, providing air carrier service from the Morgantown Airport and provides for the lease of the space they use to do that. This is a, initially a one-year agreement. That's because of the, the process for renewal of essential air service coming up in a, a one-year term through the federal government. There are two, two-year renewal options for the agreement, subject to that E A S approval coming through. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to attempt to address those as well.
Same matter that we discussed last time?
Do we need a move to-
Need a motion, yes.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional questions? Otherwise, we will call a question. All right. Our clerk will call the rule, please. Deputy Mayor of Vugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kawecki?
Yes.
Wheeze Michael?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
And Mayor Selene? Yes. Passes unanimously. We're going to move on to boards and commissions, and I believe we have one, one person nominated today.
I'd like to nominate Bronson Hurd to the, uh, Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Second, thank you. By acclamation, yes. Now, we're on to the public portion. So, this is the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And that would be that anyone wishing to speak would come to the podium, would state their name and their address. And there's a little, um, we will be working this little-
Sign-up sheet?
Yes. There are little lights there that tell you how much time you may have left. So, the first person is Peter Wenzel.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, council members. I'm Peter Wenzel. I live in First Ward. I live almost directly across from the fire station known as Station One or the South Side Fire Station. Last fall, my wife and I and our neighbors learned that you all were considering moving the South Side Fire Station. We really benefit from having this station there. They are our neighbors, they're our friends, they are part of our fabric of what makes up our neighborhood. They come to our block parties. They come and educate our children about fire safety. They trick or treat with our children and give them candy. Our children make them cookies for Christmas. So, to hear that they were going to be moved was dismaying to us. So, we wrote you all a letter in October, and we asked for a response. We asked to know what was going on. We had questions about what might go there instead, what other locations were possible. And we asked to be part of that process, and we didn't hear from any of you. So, just before Christmas, I wrote you all another letter, asking again to be part of the process, to find out what your plans were. And I got two responses, one from the mayor, one from Councilman Butcher, that they couldn't really discuss them because they were sensitive real estate issues, but that we had been heard. But again, I didn't get any answers. None of us got any answers. So, I'm here tonight, we are here tonight, to ask that these things be addressed for transparency in this process. Shortly after that second letter, we saw that in W B O Y and that you all put out a bulletin that the land on Prairie and Donnots Boulevard was being considered for the purchase for a new fire station. We don't agree that that's a great response, a great place for a fire station. We think it would increase our response times. It certainly would increase the response time to our neighborhood. We think that it would already, you know, increase congestion on already congested Donnots Boulevard and that it would also be very expensive because you have to remove a giant gas line that's running right through the property. But again, we don't really know the specifics of that because we haven't heard that yet. So, you have an opportunity here to build on a vital neighborhood that likes its firemen, supports its first responders, wants them to be there. And we haven't heard what's going to happen if you move that fire station, what's going to go in its place. It's a residential area. Another business isn't, just any old business isn't going to work there. Already, there's an empty car wash, which might be a suitable location. Already, there's the empty American Cancer Association building. Recently, you all sold the Department of Education building, and it now stands empty. So, instead of adding to the blight that's happening in this neighborhood, you have the opportunity to build on it and create something more one, and more vital there. And the, and the fire station really could be a hub. We've talked to firemen, and I know officially the word is that they're in support of it, but the firefighters that I've talked to really don't see the Prairie Avenue spot as a good location. They like being part of our neighborhood. So, what we're asking for is that you all delay any vote further until these answers are question, and these questions are answered, and that you really consider this opportunity to build on something that you already have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Matic.
Hello. Brett, hi, how are you? I'm Brett Motoc. I live on two sixty Allison Street in Morgantown, West Virginia. And I just want to second everything that Peter just said. My question, though, also, is the funding that is being used for the land? Like, I haven't, I have no idea about any of this. So, I was hoping that you guys could explain to us, like, where the money's coming from and how it's being used and, and all that. I know you, I don't think you can do that today, but that would be information that I'd be interested in, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, keep the firehouse where it is would be ideal and make it better.
So, as you noted, yeah, we don't generally respond during this, and that's just-
The way it is.
By how it is. But I think we, we will endeavor to get you more information sooner rather than later and, and do what we can, so.
Right. And then delay, yes.
Keep hearing what people say.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen Matic.
That's my big sister. I'm Kristen Motoc, two sixty-five Wagner Road. I looked through the agenda packet today, and I was really surprised by the lack of information that was in there about this purchase and the movement of the fire department. I was really hoping to see more in there. So, a couple echoing what's been said before. I am disappointed to see that it's planned to move the station out of the neighborhood, to that property specifically. I don't, I think I echo everybody's here's response that this is probably not the best place to put a fire department. A question, has a traffic study been done to examine the impacts on response times? Probably not, especially during high-traffic times like daily commutes. I work on Evansdale, and that place is backed up every morning. It's also backed up every night on that bridge, and there's no place for people to move over if a fire, a fire truck were to go through there. How about environmental impacts? Peter mentioned the gas line. Has there been any thought to how much money that would cost to move or, I don't know, remediate? Or what about the gas tanks on the commercial buildings at the laundry, laundry, the car wash? Like, would it be better to maybe look into cleaning that up instead? I don't know, there's a lot of questions, and I feel like this is all moving really fast, even though I guess, I guess it's been known for a while that it was, you know, that the fire department was going to be moved. But anyway, I hope that, you know, we kind of pause and do a little bit more research and get more information out to the people, especially the people that are impacted. We really like them where they are, and I know that they're bigger, they want to, you know, they, they need more room, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, your last name is Bleach? Thanks.
Tim Bleach, two sixty-five Wagner Road. Again, we're in a neighborhood, a couple block, blocks from the fire's house. Just want to say, I drive down South High every day, and I see trucks pull in and out of there. I cannot imagine a fire truck pulling in and out of Donnots Boulevard between Prairie Avenue and Foundry Street. Like, my wife said, traffic backs up there all the time. There's no way to get out of the way there. I, I can't see how this helps response times. I know there are people within the fire department that are not supportive of this move for that reason. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're not confined to just this list. So, if there's anyone else, we're wanting to be very complete about this. So, if there's anyone else who's wishing to speak, this is your moment.
For the record, I would be speaking, but my parents will not.
That would be up to them. You're a wise young man. Yes.
My name is Joni Rowe, and I live at three hundred Wagner Road. And I just want to echo again, I wasn't aware of the fire station moving until just a week ago, whenever it was announced with the W B O Y. And I became very concerned, especially whenever we were talking as neighbors. As Peter and everyone else that spoke before us, they are part of our neighborhood. They've always been part of our neighborhood. They are basically our family. Donnots Boulevard is probably the worst location you could ever consider. It's not safe even for a pedestrian to walk across because the, the signaling is not even good. So, I can't even imagine a fire truck trying to pull out in an emergency situation. We have come to, to know how the firemen work and operate. Whenever a truck pulls out, it's, the cars stop and they greet them and let them do their job. As, as Peter indicated, they come to our block parties. They are part of the trick-or-treating. They are part of Christmas time. There's even times where they'll welcome kids for birthday parties down, and they'll give them tours. They're educating our, our students. There's, there's a, a myriad of things, and to lose that in our neighborhood, I just can't even imagine how, how bad that would be. I hope that you would reconsider the location and talk to the community a little bit more before you make a rash decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We're going to close the public session. Under new business, we have two items. Item A, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property in the First Ward District, Morgantown, Monongalia County, from the Merit Development, from the Merit Development Incorporated. And if Emily Moserelli's feeling brave, this is, this is, this is, this is our assistant manager, and we would appreciate whatever, whatever you can have to offer on this.
Mayor, do we need a motion first?
No. Right after she just is very- Right after she does this.
I'll do a little bit of, of history, I guess. So a couple years ago, when we were looking at all of our facilities and looking at doing a facilities infrastructure bond to address our aging facilities, both the South High Fire Station and the Norwood Fire Station, which are both about 50 years old at this point, came into the conversation. We had some options. Norwood Fire Station did not need quite as much done to it, and had some room to expand on site, so we put that in with a facility infrastructure bond, but we're unsure what the future of the South High Fire Station was going to be. So we set that one aside to essentially address it separately. Through that process, we moved forward with facilities infrastructure bond, that included Norwood Fire Station, ended up being able to shift some of that to our CDBG funds. So actually, we're able to do a much larger project there. I believe that project was over a million, almost a million and a half dollars, to almost double the size of the, the living facilities at the Norwood Fire Station, because again, 50-year-old stations were made with bunk rooms that could maybe accommodate four or six people all in one sleeping quarters. That doesn't bode well for if someone gets a virus, you have hotbeds, which are constantly switching over, the, the beds are getting remade every day, someone's sleeping in it, you know, last night, you're sleeping in it tonight, someone else is sleeping in it tomorrow. Norwood, we were able to expand. The South High Fire Station, as we started going through the same process in, in working with the fire department, one of the biggest concerns was just the size of the station. I believe that some of the larger apparatuses, so the ladder trucks, the engines, and some of the rescue and response vehicles, I believe there has been multiple renovations to that station to actually increase the opening size of the truck bays to be able to fit, it's kind of like cars and phones do over time. The equipment apparatus has gotten larger over time. And so just trying to not only accommodate the crew sizes we have now, and the apparatus we have now, but also looking 50 or more years into the future, we really started to evaluate what we needed to do with that site. So we went out, hired both a local architect, which is Paradigm Architecture, and they have partnered with a fire station professional, FGMA, who, that's, that's kind of their bread and butter. And we started with a full evaluation of our existing site. So they came in, they looked at all of the plans, the HVAC, you know, where it was, a full assessment of the site. And then we actually sat down with them, I believe, and Chief could correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there was probably close to 10 firefighters with us in what we called a needs assessment. So we sat down with these folks and talked about what they've seen in other fire stations, what, how they do their work, how big the crew sizes are, what's the minimum crew, what's the maximum crew, you know, what kind of office work needs to occur, what kind of equipment they would like to be able to keep at this fire station. Any kind of special tools, or, you know, we tend to keep a lot of plywood on hand, whether that be boarding up a house after it may have caught fire, or if there's something vacant, we, we tend to have a lot of plywood. And that was something that was different than some, what other fire stations may have. A lot of local fire stations may have kind of a community room that they could do rentals. You know, we don't typically have that, but we have not, even in our newest station, which is on the north side, don't have a training location that everyone could get together and learn about how to put out new, you know, fires and EV cars, or different trainings that they could all get together on. And we do almost all of our training in-house, we have a very robust training group. So we sat down and talked about this full needs assessment for the fire station, and then we started looking at potential locations. So response time and response areas and response zones are critical. So we knew, having a fairly new station on the north side of town, and a station that we were in the middle of renovating at Norwood, which is over in Saberton on Hillcrest, those locations weren't going to move. And so we knew where the existing was, one was. So you start basically mapping out where there's different response times for an engine versus a ladder. And so we've got all these circles on a map. And we started evaluating, we evaluated the existing site. If you've been on it, I think on two or three, two of the sides, I believe there is some kind of residential apartment complex. And so there's a lot of housing on the one side, the other side is a street, or two other sides are a street. We kind of were hitting max capacity. So we looked at what could we do if we put a multi-story building on it, on the property. So the existing site was looked at, and then I, I think we started with probably close to 10 other sites within that response zone, everything as far north as where Beechhurst and University Avenue, that kind of triangle, everything as far south as the mall, every, we looked over at properties in the Greenmont area, and some of them, you know, for one reason or another, just, you know, they started to kind of whittle their way off the list. And so we ended up doing fit testing essentially with, I believe, the existing site in, in three or four other locations, in both the existing site and the footprint we have, and if we were to expand it into other properties. And so going through all of that, one of the biggest things that we realized the existing site had, even if you went up, is that it's a very small footprint, it's less than an acre of a footprint. So, but again, trying to accommodate parking, right now, there's, there's not parking accommodations on the existing site.
I know.
And so we just looked at a lot of different sites, now that we knew what our needs were for how many beds, how many offices, how many truck bays, how long of a truck base. So you kind of build this like Legos, and you just have to figure out how high or wide, or, and so that's how we did, and then looking at the response time. So through, through a number of those, we, we visited the sites. Our architects and our, our fire station specialists were able to, they were here, we, we stood on the sites, we drove around. I think there was probably close to half a dozen of the folks from the fire department with us on that tour as well. So we were able to really get a good feel, ones that maybe on paper, we didn't know if we liked, we liked them more when we were on the, on the site, and ones that we, you know, thought would be really good, we got there and, you know, didn't seem quite as great. So through that process, they did fit testing for, I believe, four different sites. And then the one that rose to the top was the one that is in front of you today. That is at the corner of Beechhurst and Prairie. It is the largest of all the sites that was looked at. Within this more immediate area, there was one much further south that was larger, further south in First Ward, but for a number of reasons, did not move forward with that one, or, or aren't recommending moving forward with that one. So while this site is kind of multi-layered, that actually can contribute well to this design, looking at a building being on one level and maybe entering in from a parking lot at a different, different level. One of the big focus points now, too, if you paid attention or saw the press release we've recently done, pre-screenings for, for cancer within our fire department through a grant that we were able to get, we're trying to really focus on separating hot zones versus cold zones, or red zones versus green zones, to try to make sure that our first responders are, are not spending more time around potentially dangerous chemicals or fumes that may get on their clothing. So we are looking right now, we were awarded the $6 million in congressionally-directed funding from Senator Manchin and Capitol, which would go towards this property, and we likely would be supplementing with capital escrow funding. I know there was a lot of discussion about traffic. One of the things that we've talked a lot about with, with our designers is making sure that we have an entryway, or an apron in front of our building that trucks can get completely turned around in, so they're not trying to back into anything that they would be able to pull in and essentially turn around onsite before backing into the station and pulling out. We would be looking likely at the overhead traffic signal, similar to what they have on Van Boren's whenever the trucks are coming out. So we do feel that this is a, a good location. It gives us, I think, the most flexibility as far as space needs, and, you know, we're, we're excited about, you know, we were excited whenever we got the north side station, and it's still a great station, but probably was not planned for enough into the future. You know, it is still kind of tight, and the other two stations, we're planning for 50-year stations, if not more. So we do have to make sure that they're sized large enough to accommodate not only what we have to deal with today, but what we may have to deal with in 30, 40, 50 years. I gave a lot at you, but if you have specific questions, I will do my best to answer those.
The, the current price, does that include any remediation work that may need to be done? Has that been evaluated yet?
So we have done a Phase One environmental site assessment, and are, are working into Phase Two. There was no further action on that site, but we're working closely with environmental specialists on that. We know the history of the site, that there, you know, most sites close to the river in Morgantown have some level of contamination just because of the industrial nature, but those are things that we're, we're prepped and ready to clean up. There were a number of other sites that we looked at that also, we knew that there was prior contamination and things that we would have to be addressed as well. And we've been in contact with the West Virginia Brownfields Association as well.
Thanks.
My only, I was just, I was more worried about the traffic pattern, but you explained it very well, so that would have been my only question, was the in-and-out traffic.
Just to summarize, so that the audience knows that we've been following this as it goes along, we're aware of what the city's done and the steps that we've taken. This was done in consultant with a group that is well-known for this kind of determination, and it was more than one site that was looked at, including the present site.
Correct.
And it was done with members of the, the fire department involved?
Yes, there was more involvement, and Chief Dean, I don't know if you have anything to add, but Chief Dean and I have been working together closely throughout this whole process. And so the initial needs assessment had a lot of people involved with that, and we had different groups of people, most, some of the people, about half the people from the needs assessment, actually, we, we first did a desktop review of all the sites, and then we went out physically and drove the sites, and there was a number of folks with us on that from the fire department.
I guess the bottom line is that this was not something done in haste. Thank you.
Yeah. It's kind of like buying a house, you're never going to find the perfect house in the perfect location with the, the perfect backyard. But we are excited about having a first-class facility for our first responders, one that we have room to grow in.
And let me speak for council, at least for my portion of the council, that was our concern, was to get, to provide for the, the fire department a facility that would be appropriate to their needs and would serve the city well. We wanted to do as much as we could, as well as we could, and we were fortunate enough to get some monies made available to us that put us in a position that we could do this. So I hope you do understand, it's not that we want to move you from your neighborhood, it's that we want to really provide for the city in its long term, and for our fire department in that they have what they need in order to serve us well.
Are we allowed to ask you an additional question? How big is that lot?
The lot in all of its different parcels is about an acre and a half. So I think it's about two and a half times larger than the existing site.
So to consider neighborhood needs and the ability to interact with the neighborhood, will there be sidewalks that will come down that side?
Uh, I don't know if we've looked that far into it.
As you're getting that far into it, kids do like to walk up.
Prairie Avenue is a state-maintained roadway. It is one of the roadways that we have asked them to give us, but, you know, still, still options for working through that.
Well, it sure would be nice if at least through the funeral home property and into the top of the property, that there be some sort of a way to walk down and, and access the fire station would be appreciated if it can work.
There is a sidewalk on Prairie.
There is a sidewalk there already.
There's one going down.
I'm not saying it's an easy walk, but I know that there is a sidewalk.
Then maintain, maintain or improve whatever, whatever is there. See? Local knowledge, that's what I mean.
So could you talk, I guess, just a little bit more about, like, why the current site was, in, in the process, was not determined as ideal, or if there, what, what problems you came across when you're talking about a 50-year fire station in terms of the current site? And also, I've, being part of the Parking Authority, I know that we have a lot of problems with a car wash site, extensive remediation that needs done at that site, and, but just if you could expand on, on those kind of problems, those issues that we might have with the current site.
Yeah, absolutely. So as I mentioned, the current site's very small, we'd be looking at a minimum of a three-story station there, and even with that, to get the footprint for the modern trucks. And you would have parking for about one shift, so you would run into the same issues that exist now, that during shift change, if, if you look on a parcel viewer, our parking for our staff is actually in the roadway. We, we've taken up the whole side of, and I apologize, I don't recall what that side street is called, but that side street where we park alongside and in the back is actually, you know, in the, the public right-of-way that we're parking there. And when they do their weekly, daily, when do you do all your checks on your equipment?
Weekly.
Okay.
Mondays.
So depending on what types of checks, when they pull the ladders out, that would be in the roadway. So all their ladder checks would likely be in the roadway because the apron would not be large enough for a full truck to be able to pull out and extend the ladder.
And, and as far as the old car wash?
The old car wash was, is similar, so it is larger than the existing site, smaller than the proposed site. That is, you would maybe be able to get trucks out on a diagonal, but not really be accommodating space. One of the things that we originally tried to look for is actually a pull-through station, so it helps people not having to back up. And I've never driven a, a fire truck or an engineer ladder truck, so I can barely drive my minivan, so, but, you know, it does take a little bit of finesse to be able to do that, and trying to, so we tried to find a, a site that we could pull through, and it just wasn't a possibility. And even with the, the car wash station, other than the known remediation, so I believe at that point, when we were looking at that property, was actually priced higher for less acreage, because it had an existing commercial business on it.
What, what kind of issues are we seeing with the current fire station such that we feel it needs to be upgraded?
Chief, do you want to?
What issues are you having with your current station?
Could you, could you just come up, just come up briefly and just say what issues we have with the current?
My name's Eugene Dean, I'm a fire chief. You want to know what kind of current issues we have?
Yeah, yeah.
Drain problems, roofs leaking, dayroom, dayroom leaks, bedroom leaks over top of the staff, truckhouse roof leaking. over top of the staff, um, truckhouse roof leaking, floors falling apart in the truckhouse. Sanitaries, sanitary sewers are gone. Um, you know, like we, like the assistant manager said, we, that station was built in about 52, 54. So, and we're no ways near in the process of being able to get it replaced, but, you know, we need to be trying to get it replaced somewhere. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. As far as like the sleeping situation there, could you describe that?
Well, we're, we are maxed out in reference to personnel being able to sleep at that house. Uh, depending on the duty officers running this crew at any given day, we could have as many as eight or nine men in that small house. Um, it's to the point, especially when we went through COVID, that we moved the duty officer out of the bunk room and made his bunk room in his office. That is a common office area for the general public that could walk in there. So we're maxed out with personnel there. It's got a common large bunk room to accommodate what they believed back in the 50s of what they would need. And of course, they probably came to work in, um, with just a small shoebox of necessities where today it's so much larger.
Thank you so much for answering this question.
I'll make one quick comment. I think we all know that the firemen and firefighters have to leave that site. We're well aware of that. We've talked to them a lot and we know that they've outgrown it.
We really, I'm sorry. We really can't, we really. We'll talk, when, when we, we have, um, we each in a minute have an opportunity to speak in our comments and we'll address, we got the, we got the idea that maybe you prefer the other site, but we'll address in our comments and we, we've, we've heard that, but we really at this portion don't, don't speak with the public right now.
Okay.
So are there any other questions? Did we ever do the nice motion?
We did.
Pardon?
We did have a motion.
Okay, good.
I don't think we did have a motion.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so either. We talked about having a motion. Good.
Oh, wait, I did. I, I said we should have a motion.
Oh, good, thank you.
My apologies.
Yes, good. Would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? I think we've covered it. So if you would please call a roll.
Deputy Mayor of Buganum.
Yes.
Bill Kowicki.
Yes.
Wheeze Michael.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes. So that's approved unanimously. And now we're going to move on to the city manager's report. No, 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 no. Item B, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance suspending enforcement of subsections E and J of section 1331.07, 27 of the city code. And city attorney, um, if you would, um, explain this.
Yes, so, um, the, the city has in place within its zoning code, a set of supplemental regulations that provide, uh, certain particular requirements or limitations on defined uses that are allowed in the various districts within the city. Within the, the B four and the B one districts, which are the downtown business district and the neighborhood business district, uh, what is defined as a restaurant private club use has several limitations on operation, which are defined in supplemental regulation 27. So a restaurant private club is an establishment that, um, has its main purpose as the service of food, but also has a license to sell alcoholic beverages. Private clubs that are not restaurants are not permitted under the zoning code within those districts, although some still operate as non-conforming pre-existing uses prior to the adoption of that regulation, uh, in about 1994. So supplemental regulation number 27 has numerous conditions that also spell out other requirements related to that main purpose to ensure the primary business is service of food. And two of those specifically relate to revenue derived from alcohol sales. There's, uh, subsection E of that regulation provides that restaurant private club must receive, uh, at least 60% of its, uh, income from food and non-alcohol beverage sales. So no more than 40% of that type of income from sales of alcoholic beverages. And then subsection J requires that those licensed businesses make quarterly reports to the city finance office so that, um, the, that revenue split can, uh, can sort of be insured. The city has for, uh, probably for a couple of years now, been looking at options to update those regulations to ensure that they do promote compatible and diverse uses downtown that contribute to the character of the district, um, make it a, a good place for those restaurant type businesses that people want to come down and visit, but also, uh, decrease the regulatory barriers to people wanting to open a new establishment like that. This, uh, this particular part of the regulation, which a lot of people who, uh, work with the city or operate businesses downtown refer to in shorthand as the 60-40 rule, um, often is difficult and, and poses a, an upfront barrier both from the operator side and from the city enforcement side because, uh, as you can imagine, it's hard to predict what particular amounts of revenue you might derive, although you, you may establish a, a restaurant with tables where people go and get meals, um, you know, you don't control exactly what people buy. And likewise, it's a, a difficult mechanism for the city to enforce because it's not the same as most typical zoning regulations, which say a type of use is permitted in a particular district and, you know, maybe it needs to have a 10 foot setback from the property line. Those kinds of things are observable by, uh, city enforcement staff or by development staff, but, um, the kind of auditing or reporting and enforcement isn't, uh, isn't typical of our zoning code. So it's, it's something that's proved, uh, difficult for the city and for businesses. The city's in the process of looking at a, uh, an update to that code and, um, expect the planning commission to begin consideration of those updates at its meeting this month. So what this ordinance would do is while that planning is in process and considering, um, all these kind of historical factors with those particular subsections of the regulation, it would directly sit in a much closer to that, closer to that 60-40. Remaining provisions of the supplemental regulation would stay in place. So there's still a condition that the, uh, the main purpose of a restaurant private club in the B four and the B one districts must be the service of food. It, um, it doesn't just allow new types of businesses to come and operate, and these businesses are still a, a conditional use in the district. They have to go to the board of zoning appeals and get a conditional use permit before beginning operation as well. But, um, but this ordinance would sort of recognize that difficulty, uh, suspend enforcement while new regulations are considered through the planning commission, through city council and put in place.
Thank you. An motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then do we have? Yes, the important thing to me is that we still expect restaurant clubs to remain, restaurant private clubs and serve food, even if this is, even if the specific numbers are, um, not being enforced at this time.
Yes, and I believe that subsection A of supplemental regulation 27 that provides that the, the primary purpose of these establishments will be the service of meals to patrons.
So as long as that is continuing to be enforced and emphasized, then if we're not looking at the specifics of the percentages, from my perspective, that would be all right. So I'm wondering what everyone else here is thinking and who has questions?
I don't know. No real questions.
I think it'll be good.
No questions. Just a general comment that I guess we've seen some frustration with this regulation in the past. I'm glad staff looked at it. I appreciate the work on it.
Yep. Definitely has been some frustration. All right. So, um, city clerk, if you would call the note.
Deputy Mayor of Buganum.
Yes.
Bill Kowicki.
Yes.
Wheeze Michael.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. And now we're on the city manager's report and I was wondering if our assistant city manager had anything to report.
Uh, you know, I did not prepare a detailed report. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. Um, we are about to, uh, hit the ground running with the second, uh, round of budget meetings, uh, starting tomorrow afternoon. We are nearing the completion of, uh, construction at city hall. Uh, we have flooring that was going in today, so.
Doors at the front look nice.
Yes, we're very excited. Uh, so, um, we do have furniture scheduled for delivery at the beginning of February, so we are hoping, uh, to get back into our home. Uh, thank you to all of city council who was able to go on the tours. I hope you enjoyed it and it's going to be, uh, very exciting to, to get back in there. Um, we are luckily did not have any issues with snow over the weekend. While it did snow, the ground was all, uh, warm enough, so, um, only a couple icy spots here and there. We do have our, um, our midnight crews that are out. Uh, they're the ones that typically do the street sweeping, but in the winter they're on ice patrol. Uh, and so they were out and, and were able to give good reports on, on that. Uh, we are potentially prepping for potential snow come this weekend. Uh, some precipitation anticipated and temperature is kind of hovering, so, uh, you know, the winter January is all about snow and budgets, so, uh, that's, that's where we're at, so.
Thank you for the impromptu.
Yes, that's all I have to report today.
Appreciate that.
If you have any questions, so by all means.
She had no warning that she was going to be asked. All right. Our city clerk, nothing to report. Thank you. Our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the, um, comments and questions on the, the POTA ordinance. We'll, uh, get that to you in, uh, final proposed form for first reading on January 16th. Um, and really appreciate all the work of council members, staff and, uh, and stakeholders in, uh, in looking at this and seeing how it might work for the city. We have another meeting that Main Street Morgantown has arranged on, uh, January 11th as well to talk about, um, talk about implementation and seeing how it goes. So, um, we'll continue working on that and, um, I have nothing additional to report tonight.
Great. Councilor Buganum, would you like to start the, uh, council reports?
Sure, my report will be, uh, quick. Happy, uh, New Year. I haven't seen any of you since last year, so I'm glad I was able to work that joke in. Thank you. Um, with that said, uh, hopefully everybody had an enjoyable New Year and a safe one. And I'm just gonna keep it short and sweet and stop right there and say I'm glad to be back into some routine.
Thanks. I'm looking forward to a new year and, um, some of the, uh, interesting things that we have in queue with the city. And hopefully, uh, we will continue our forward progress. We've, uh, done pretty well this past year or two. Considering what we've been up against, we've done extremely well. And, uh, I'm looking forward, like I said, to the continued momentum. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report. I just want to wish everybody a happy new year and that will be it for me.
Thank you. Councilor Michaels?
Very good. Um, one update, uh, Mon River Trail Conservancy received some good news today that they received the verbal notice to proceed, working with Thrasher on the lighting under the bridge by the amphitheater.
Yes.
Since 2012, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, Division of Highway gave us the verbal to move forward. Um, so that is, um, preparing an award letter and schedule a pre-construction meeting, so that's moving forward and should be fast tracked now to get, get that done soon, so.
We're gonna have to have a real, like, um, party when that's completed.
To all go down there at night and stand under the light.
Just gaze at it. All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, for, for my part, I do hope, um, people that came here to speak that, uh, they, uh, understand that this is part of the public process and we appreciate everybody that came to talk about their concerns. I think it's important that we all hear those concerns and that we're able to provide feedback on them. I hope we were able to provide a lot of the kind of unanswered questions that people had tonight. Um, so, um, yeah, um, you know, that's, this is part of the public process and we do listen and we are, um, trying to understand what people's concerns are. Beyond that, um, it's like, um, housing time. So, uh, it's, it's where all that stuff gets, um, ramped up a lot, I think, because people get into situations where they're, um, very concerned about their current state of housing because it's so cold. And, um, so the warming shelter, from what I understand from Carrie, is doing well. It appears to be operating, uh, well. I wanted to thank everybody who, um, donated items to the warming shelter. I guess we had some issues. I don't know if you've heard this before from people up there, but there's apparently some issues sometimes with getting deliveries up there from UPS and FedEx, because they don't want to, it, I don't know if it has to do with the ad dressing or what, um, but like, it, she said she had, Carrie said she has some trouble sometimes getting stuff up there to specific agencies. I don't know. There's something we could do to help that. Um, but she had some trouble getting some of the items that were delivered from Amazon up there and we kind of had to set like a special delivery so it would come back. I don't know. Weird stuff. But anyway, uh, thank you to everybody who donated stuff. Um, and, um, January 17th, we will be having a celebration at 123 for the opening, uh, the grand opening of Rainbow House. If, if anybody from council would like to attend, um, there will be, as far as I can see right now, and I can't say who it is yet, but I just got the agreement today for a nationally touring act to be there. So there will be like a bigger act, which I say not necessarily because like you guys would be excited to see them, but it's because like if you do want to go, you probably will have to buy tickets in advance, um, because it will probably sell out.
When is this, Brian?
January 17th. And I would hope it sells out. That would be good for us. But we, Project Rainbow is currently operating and has clients, but, um, it is, uh, we, we've been like waiting till the students came back to like have a proper celebration of the opening of the facility. Uh, for those that don't know, it is a LGBTQ focused, uh, shelter for unhoused people. I think, other than that, I was trying to think, there was something else I had, but I cannot remember it now. So I will leave it there. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. To follow up on Councilor Butcher's, um, comments, I really appreciated, um, the neighborhood coming and I appreciated their previous emails. Sometimes if, if, um, a group doesn't receive back the information that they would like, it's because a project is kind of in transition. So when it's in a situation where they're choosing between properties and it's being evaluated, we don't always know everything that's going on then, so we don't really have a good answer. And then if we're buying property during that phase, we also don't really have a good answer because we're hearing about some property in executive session and so on. And so it's just hard, um, sometimes to give the good answer. So I appreciate your attempt. I made an attempt. I even had a typo in there, which was a little bit embarrassing. But I, I, uh, I think it's good that we, um, include the neighborhood where we can and I appreciate them coming. And, uh, I know that they were wishing that we were choosing possibly the car wash, um, property, but that was. but that was not as large of a property, and that was not a property that we were wanting to take on right now. So this is, I think, and I'm sure that it doesn't feel good to the neighbors, but it is closer to the neighborhood than if it were to be moved out of the neighborhood. And if we can work on a way that people can access it as a pedestrian, I think that would help. So anything we can do in our planning to, you know, at least have one good way for, two good ways for, from the street and from above, that people can access it, that I think that would be important. And I don't have any other comments besides the old Happy New Year and Merry Christmas, and really appreciate everyone getting here on the 2nd of January, and everyone's work on putting this meeting together. So it's a good time to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Thank you.